Good evening. Welcome to the Vineland Board of Education, April 28, 2021, 5:00. Public hearing and adoption of the 2021-2022 school budget. Roll call, please, Mr. Berman.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Present.
Mr. Finoki?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Mr. Rivera? Mr. Sabrana?
Present.
Mr. Silva? Ms. Spinelli?
Here.
And Mr. English?
Here, Mr. Berman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Berman, just for the record, Mr. Rivera just stepped in at 5:04 PM, Wednesday, April 28. Thank you. In compliance with New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law, commonly referred to as the Sunshine Law, the Vineland Board of Education has called notice and posting of this meeting to be sent to the following, announcing time and place thereof, agenda, etc. The Daily Journal, SNJ Today, the Press of Atlantic City, Nuestra Comunidad, Visto Bueno, the Clerk for the City of Vineland, and the Administrative Office Public Bulletin Board. At this time, I would ask that everyone please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Alrighty, number four on tonight's agenda, public hearing on the 2021-2022 budget. At this time, does anyone from the public have any comments they would like to make? Do we have any yellow sheets this evening? We did not receive any. Is anyone here that would like to address on the budget? Seeing none, we will go to number five, public comments on agenda item slash public comment on any district matter. Do we have any yellow sheets on that, Mr. Berman? Do I have anybody out there that would like to speak this evening? Okay, seeing none, moving right along. We are going to number six, superintendent recommendations for approval to the board.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend discussion of the following items regarding the 21-22 school district budget for submission to the State of New Jersey Department of Ed as follows: General fund, $180,420,638, with a local tax levy of $26,719,372. Special revenue, $27,348,72. Total budget, $207,768,710, with the local tax levy, $26,719,372.
Do I have any questions or comments?
I would like to recommend discussion of the local tax levy in the amount of $26,719,372.
Any questions or comments by my board members?
I'd like to recommend discussion of the contribution to maintenance reserve in the amount of $2,818,864.
Questions or comments?
I'd like to recommend discussion of the maximum travel amount in accordance with NJAC 6A:23A-7.3 for the 21-22 school district budget in the amount of $39,528.50. The travel amount spent to date in the 2021 school year budget is $778.69.
Do I have any questions or comments? Dr. Grucio, just a real quick comment from me. I just want to take a moment to thank Mr. Mustarel and his staff for, again, I know the budget process is always tough, and we're Cumberland County, so I know we always hope for more funding, and you continue to work magic through the budget and keep as many people employed as possible. So thank you to you and your staff. Thank you to Mr. Berman. I know you came in in the kind of the 11th or 11th and a half hour, but thank you for your guidance and definitely appreciated by myself and the board. Thank you.
I'd like to recommend approval of items 6A through 6D.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please, Mr. Berman.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Mr. Finoki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva? Mr. Spinelli?
Yes.
Mr. English?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. At this time, I will be turning over the chair to my vice president, Ms. Meg Spinelli. She will be handling item number seven on our board agenda this evening.
Good evening. The next item is a proposed item for review or discussion adapted by board members. The chair will enter a motion for the proposal of the resolution entitled "A Resolution Authorizing and Approving the Employment of Alfonso Q. Lano as Superintendent of Schools for a Five-Year Term from July 1, 2021 to June 30, 2026." Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Berman, roll call, please. Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Cottis Patti?
Yes.
Mr. Finoki?
Yes.
Mr. Holmes?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Sabrana?
Yes.
Mr. Silva?
I have to abstain. I'm conflicted.
Ms. Spinelli?
Yes.
And Mr. English?
Due to my conflict, I will be abstaining this evening.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Motion passes.
At this time, I'm going to invite Ms. Cottis Patti, the Chair of the Superintendent Committee Search, to introduce Mr. Lano.
I'll be giving my full report as to our superintendent search at next week's board meeting, but would like to give a short history about the search process. The committee began with 31 applicants and had three rounds of interviews. We are very excited about Mr. Lano's experience, his passion for the students, and his enthusiasm and desire to come to Vineland. After the entire process is completed, the board feels there is no doubt he is the best fit for us and will bring a wealth of knowledge and talent to our district. I am extremely pleased to welcome, on behalf of the board, Alfonso Lano as Vineland's next superintendent, along with his family.
May I take the mask off? Okay. Thank you, Board of Education, our members here this evening, the community. This is a wonderful day for my family, who I brought with me this evening, as I begin to transition into the superintendent position here in Vineland. It's been a lifelong dream to be able to connect with a community such as Vineland that is committed to the education of its students, that has a wonderfully engaged and supportive Board of Education, has an engaged teaching community as well. I am looking forward to the work. I'm excited. I'm committed. I'm ready to do this work with you. I'm super excited, and I can't contain the energy that we have with the Board of Education and our community, and I look forward to being able to connect with Dr. Grucio and do some school visits, get into the classrooms, meet teachers, meet the kids, meet the community. I look forward to being very engaged and hands-on and hit the ground running on July 1st. So again, I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to be here this evening in front of you. I accept this tremendous responsibility with humility, and I'm looking forward to do the work every day for the community of Vineland. Thank you.
Mr. English, I now return the chair for the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Spinelli. Job well done. You have a prettier voice than myself as well. At this time, we will close our meeting with board member comments. I will start to my right with Mr. Fioki.
I just want to welcome Mr. Yano. I think you're going to be a great addition to our district. Of course, we're going to be missing Dr. Grucio, but I'm confident that you will fill her shoes quickly. That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes?
Yes, first, thank you to Mr. Mustarel and your staff for a great job with the budget this year, all the time and work that you put into it. Second, I want to congratulate Mr. Yano. It was a long process for our committee, and thank my other three board members that put in the time, weekends, nights, to choose what I believe is the best fit for Vineland right now. When we started the process, I asked myself, when you say, oh, 31 applicants, what does Vineland need right now to launch us into the next journey in education? And that is, no doubt in my mind, that Mr. Yano was the person to lead us into that next phase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Ms. Costa?
Good evening. Again, I'd like to thank Mr. Mustarel and your entire team for working so diligently on the budget. I really do appreciate all the hard work, and I'm happy that we've gotten to the point now where we can worry about next year. With respect to the superintendent search, I can honestly say that in all the years that I've been a board member, I don't think that anything has weighed as heavy as the process of searching for a new superintendent. Dr. Grucio is very dear and near to my heart. She's done such a wonderful job over those 46 years that she has dedicated herself to our community, to the children of Vineland, to all of us. So we're not done with her yet, but I have to stop and acknowledge her. But as we were searching, every single day, the thought that came to my mind, and sometimes in the middle of the night, are we going to pick, is there going to be a candidate that is going to fit the needs of our community, of our families, and, most importantly, of our students? And I am so very, very happy to say that through a lot of hard work, we found Mr. Yanos. I do believe that he is going to make a wonderful superintendent. I believe he's going to be the type of superintendent that you're not going to hear about, you're going to see all the time. And I am truly, truly looking forward to working with you, along with your team, and I look forward to all our teachers and staff, administration, really getting to know you, because I believe that they're going to follow your vision. And I feel sorry for your old school district, but I'm really happy that you came to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costa. Ms. Cottis Patti?
I'd like to echo my fellow board members with thanking Scott Mustarel and his team. Our budget is over the top, and you guys always do a phenomenal job, and you really did a stand-up job this year also. So thank you. Mr. Lano, you and I have had many conversations, and you know how I feel about you coming into this district, and I'm excited. As I said, your enthusiasm, just the little bit that you spoke, I think people can see where your heart is and where your head is, and I am very excited to have you in this district. I was the one that was able to call you and talk to you right afterwards, and I told you I was in tears. So I was just so excited that we found somebody that was going to be able to come into our district and do also what needs to be done. Dr. Grucio has been here for many years, and she's done a phenomenal job, so we need somebody that's going to be able to come in and pick up from that and move forward. And I believe we have picked that best person. So thank you to you and your family for coming down tonight, and we are so excited to have you in our Vineland family.
Thank you, Ms. Cottis Patti. Mr. Silva?
Yes, Mr. Mustarel, thank you and your team for a job well done on the budget. Ms. Yano, I welcome you to the Vineland School District. You have been selected to lead our district because of your intellect, vision, and ability to take our district to the next level. You are being charged with developing and implementing a robust educational program, increasing the level of parental involvement, and bringing all stakeholders together under one mission and vision to provide a stellar education to our students. It is my hope that you will make every effort to foster and cultivate practices to ensure that continued success of our students, school, and community. In addition, I am confident that you will provide boundless opportunities beyond the classroom settings that are exemplary, providing enriching learning experiences for students at all levels. I am excited about you being here, and I want you to know that I'm here to help you and support you in getting the job done. Furthermore, I know that you will be a leader, full of integrity, have the ability to delegate and not work in isolation, effectively communicate with the board, staff, community, have self- and situational awareness of what is happening in the district, and most importantly for me is to lead by example. I want you to make the hard decision as well as recognize the successes. I would hope that you will empower others and motivate and inspire our staff and students. Lastly, be honest and true in your dealings, be politically astute, but do not let politics keep you from doing what is best for our students. Thank you and welcome you to and the family to Vineland School District.
Thank you, Mr. Silva. Mr. Sabrana?
I want to echo the comments of my colleagues, Scott and your team. Great job on the budget. Obviously, there was no one here to talk about it, so that must mean it was a great budget. Mr. Yano, welcome to Vineland and welcome to your family. I look forward to working with you. Normally, I would say that you have a huge challenge ahead, but coming off of this pandemic, I think it's, those problems are going to be multiplied. Our kids have lost so much over the last year, and there's so much work to do. But I heard passion, I heard energy, I heard hit the ground running, all the things that you're going to need in the next year and beyond to help us get back to where we were. Dr. Grucio, thank you for your many, many years of service. I wish you a retirement that's full of good health and happiness and a chance to do all the things that you never had time to do when you were working. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sabrana. Mr. Rivera?
Good evening, everyone. I echo everything that my fellow board members have said. Scott, thank you for the budget and the team that worked behind this budget. Thank you again. To Mr. Yano and your family. Excuse me. I tend to get a little motion about certain things. This represents more than just another superintendent. As a product of the school system, myself, and a lifelong Vineland resident, growing up as a Latino kid, I never thought that perhaps I can see someone that spoke like me, talked like me, looked like me somewhat. And a little bit more here. Be in the position that you are today. Es un orgullo. I am proud that this city was able to select Mr. Yano, not solely based because he's Latino, but because you deserve this. You are ready for this. You are ready for this challenge. The city needs something to reinvigorate it, and anywhere we can start that spark, I'm all for it. I welcome you. I welcome your family, and I know that the residents of Vineland, as soon as they get to see you and see your work ethic and see that you want to, that you want to improve the entire student body, they'll get right behind you. Welcome, again, on behalf of the board, on behalf of all of us, and on behalf of myself. Bienvenidos. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Ms. Spinelli?
Good evening. Thanks to Scott and his team for another well-done budget and for the superintendent search. It was very challenging. It was very eye-opening. It was, I'll echo what Ms. Costa said, I learned so much about the perception of the district, about my fellow board members, and just about what's out there for a superintendent. And I want to thank everyone who did apply for the job. Like we said, we had 31 candidates, and it was not an easy task or an easy decision for the four of us to come together. I want to welcome Mr. Lano to the Vineland District. You do have some big shoes to fill here, replacing Dr. Grucio. It is like family, and you will see that very quickly here in this building. I am signing the contract, and I'm going to hold you to it. So I look forward to working with you, and I hope you hit the ground running, like you said. Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Spinelli. Dr. Grucio?
Thank you. First of all, Mr. Berman, Mr. Mustarel, and your entire staff, thank you. I know you put countless hours into this budget, and I want to thank you for the fine job that all of you did. Alfonso, welcome. I'm very happy for you and your family. You will find Vineland is truly a family. You're going to be surrounded by wonderful people. My team are just top-notch, and you're going to love working with them. I don't think you could ask for better people. Rossini's just phenomenal. You're going to love working with her. And I've been here for 46 years, and I don't regret one minute. It's my home. I love walking in here every day, and I know you're going to do a great job. I'm here if you need anything. I will take the time to take you through the district. We'll set up a couple of dates. We have great teachers here, wonderful students from all kinds of situations, which you will see very shortly, and I'm just so proud to be a part of this district and this community, and I know you will be too. So I wish you nothing but the very, very best. I welcome you and your family to the Vineland family, and we will be talking very soon. God bless you and good luck.
Thank you, Dr. Grucio. I love the passion, and I love when all my board members speak, because that's what it's all about, the communication. Before I get to Mr. Lano, I just want to take a moment to recognize as the month of April is coming to a close. I have my blue on today and my little autism apple, just to thank the staff members and the schools. I understand today they blew some bubbles around the district for continuing to raise awareness for autism. When I first started back on this board back in 2010, I knew the word autism, but I really didn't understand the spectrum and really what it was all about. But I was fascinated how our district handles this. Terry Galuski out there, I mean, you guys do a great job with it, and it's good to see that we continue to raise awareness for this. So I do want to thank all our staff members, the students, the parents that get involved, because it is a great thing to definitely raise awareness for during this month. As far as the committee goes, the superintendent search committee, everyone who knows me knows I'm a control freak, and I can't stand being, not being a part of something. And to be a conflicted board member because my wife is a simple kindergarten aide in the district, it just blows my mind. But I swallow, as Mr. DeSanto has taught me, to swallow the ruling and go through the process. So... So unfortunately, there were two board members that were conflicted, and that left seven board members to go through a grueling process, and I had to, I had, I had picked Ms. Cottis Patti to chair something, and it is not a job that's an easy job. And I knew that going in there, in a way, I kind of apologized because you think you know what's going to happen, but until you actually get involved in that, I believe Mr. Holmes said it, it's nights, it's weekends, it's, oh, no, whose feelings am I hurting? I don't want to hurt the feelings, but it's really not about feelings. The one thing I said before I turned it over was, I don't care what the gender was, I didn't care what the race was, I wanted the best candidate. And I trust that my board members did this search to the best of their ability and found us the best candidate. Being not part of the process, I, you know, you can only rely on the rumors you hear, and unfortunately, rumors are rumors, and now I can do a little bit more homework because I finally have a contract in front of me and I can learn about the gentleman called Alfonso Lano. So I want to thank the committee because, again, I know the process was tough, and no matter what, you're never going to make everyone happy, as we all know, when we take these seats. So my hat goes off to the four committee members, the three other board members that came in at the end of the process. I hope it was a clean and transparent process, and if anyone would like to discuss the process with me, I, I would like to know how the process went. I believe I'm able to do that now that it's a completed process, correct, Mr. DeSanto?
It's factual.
Factual, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Mr. Lano, I don't know if they warned you at any of these meetings about this board president that loves to talk. I try and time everybody out because we give each one board member five minutes to speak, so if somebody gets two minutes, that means I get their three minutes, somebody does four, then I get another minute, so it grows and grows. Very hard, I like to prepare myself, but then when I didn't know the background on you, it was very hard, so I, I jotted some things down this afternoon after I got done work, and I just, I just wanted to share some things with you. Being one of the two conflicted board members, it's finally good to meet and welcome Mr. Lano to New Jersey's largest city in square miles known as Vineland. Although we are a large city in square miles, everyone knows everyone, and no secret is ever safe, as you will quickly learn. Way back in 2010, Vineland Board of Education President Ron Franceschini shared some words of wisdom with me, as I was a young, eager, and ready to change the world newly-elected Vineland Board of Education member. He said, "Scott, always remember that it's a marathon. It's definitely not a sprint." He was right 100%. I share that same advice with you and want to, want to add a few things to that advice that I have learned along the way. I have a motto, CCT. My board members hear me preach it, it's communication, it's collaboration, and it's transparency. It's a real simple format, if you follow it, you truly can't go wrong. Unfortunately, sometimes people don't like what they hear with that communication, but they're never wondering what that person's thinking. I give you advice as to come in here with a sharp scalpel, not a 24-inch chainsaw. Don't be afraid to say no, and be consistent. And most importantly, you are the leader, so lead by example. I look forward to working with you and hearing your vision for the future here in Vineland, not only the community, but the school district. To get this far, I know you do your homework, so I do have a homework assignment for you. The Vineland Board of Education, first let me say, Dr. Grucio, through this pandemic, has done an outstanding job. We have a county that we're the largest school district in, but we have to answer to our health department with different rules and things. One thing that I would like to see happen when you start your job is to, I'd like to see a plan, and I know my board members would love to see this as well, as well as the community. Come September, the goal would be to be back to school five days a week, five full days a week, but that only can happen if we can figure out how to feed these kids lunch. And I know my fellow board members have been banging this drum, and I will continue to hold it and bang it. So, didn't want to put any pressure on you, you got 60 days worth of homework here, and I do want to welcome you and your family to the community of Vineland. We are rich in tradition, which you will find, and we are unique. We are 100% unique. We are a board that is dedicated for what is best, and according to my committee, they found the best. So together, I look forward to great things for the city of Vineland and its school district. With that being said, I would ask for a motion for adjournment this evening.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night.